Live at YouTube. There we go. All right, you're good to go.
All right. Good morning. It's 9:01 September 21st. I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. First established that we have a quorum present.
We do. We have seven members. And if you'll allow me real quick, I want to introduce the newest member of our Planning Commission.
Please.
Yeah, Brittany is over here, Brittany Davis, and she's a local Realtor. She can probably tell us a lot more about herself than I can, but she currently has asked to step down at this time. So she has been appointed in his place, and we're very excited to have her on and get her going and teach her the ways of Planning Commission. So if y'all would all join me in welcoming her.
Good morning, Brittany. Welcome aboard.
Morning. Thank you. I definitely look forward to working with everyone.
All right, I'm going to move forward. Consent agenda. The Planning Commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. Looks like we have a couple of items, one being this Paul Ann West addition, section 15. Do we need to pull that item to extend it?
I'm sorry, you must have an old copy of agenda. Paul Ann was actually moved to the regular agenda. So what we're looking for here, it's okay. The only thing that are on there is the regular, is the mating minutes and Ellison Estates.
Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the Ellison addition and the minutes for the meeting, previous meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Okay, that's seven zero.
All right. Regular agenda subdivision plats. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. A first replat of block three Monterey addition.
Travis, I'm sorry, can we go to Paul Ann West real quick?
Sure. Is it a subdivision plat?
It is. Yes, sir. And it's actually on the most recent agenda. So we'll start with that one.
So Paul Ann West addition, section 15, a request for approval of a final plat of Paul Ann West addition being 4.560 acres north of the intersection of First Atlas Street and Johnny Lane.
And before staff starts their presentation, I think Mr. Gully would like to speak on this.
Yes, we would request that this be postponed. The developer would like some additional time to kind of digest the sidewalk requirement and allow us to meet with staff to discuss that.
Okay, the applicant has requested an extension of this case to the October Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move Paul Ann West to the October agenda. All in favor, say aye by show of hands.
Seven zero.
Opposed? All right, seven zero. All right, first replat of block three Monterey addition. Request for approval of the first replat of block three Monterey addition being .764 acres located southeast corner of West Avenue Y, South Bryant Boulevard, and a variance from section 103A2 of Land Development Subdivision Ordinance to maintain a minimum paving width of 26 feet in lieu of the required 36 feet with a four-foot sidewalk or 40 feet with no sidewalk for West Avenue Y, an urban local road.
All right. Morning Planning Commissioners and Hillary Bueker, the Planning Manager. We'll go through this case. This is a subdivision plat. Give me one second. You're looking at the first replat in block three of the Monterey addition. It is .764 acres, and we're at the southeast corner of West Avenue Y and South Bryant Boulevard. So this is kind of near the newest Dollar Tree, if you can picture that in the southern part of San Angelo. The zoning is neighborhood commercial. The future land use is neighborhood center. We are in District Three, Harry Thomas's district in the Rio Vista neighborhood. So this proposed final plat is two new lots out of several lots that were previously plotted for residential development and the variance to maintain the 26-foot paving width and existing curb and gutter on West Avenue Y. So we are recommending approval of the plat. The CN zoning is consistent with the neighborhood's future land use. We are suggesting a more pedestrian-friendly character with the addition of sidewalks, so we believe it fits in with the comprehensive plan. The conformity with the intent of purpose statements, this will provide orderly, safe, and efficient development of the city. And once the variance is looked at and we widen the street, it could ensure safe, convenient, functional system for vehicular and pedestrian circulation. On the Chapter 10 Street variance rationale, we are not recommending approval. Staff believes the addition of a commercial business would add additional traffic to this area. Again, the street is only currently 26 feet wide, so this is a kind of a hard thing. They're actually developing new homes as well. So as I go through this, I'll show you some additional pictures and help you look at this variance. The widening would be at the intersection of South Bryant Boulevard, which would allow increased turning room as people are going in and out of the proposed commercial development. Four and a half feet of required paving is all they would be required to pave with the addition of the sidewalk, which staff is recommending. And the current width is insufficient with the additional traffic. I'll go back if I need to to a previous slide. Just one block east of this is the city's rec center, Jamie Pardon Park and the Boys and Girls Club. So this is also a through street for most of those as well. So if two cars are parked on each side, it creates a one travel lane, and that could be hard. So I'll show you these pictures real quick. This is actually West Avenue Y here on the left. This is a new home that you can see the white directly left of it, and they're building a new home on the right as well. So there already being increasing in traffic, plus the new commercial that is being proposed on this side. The picture on the right is actually an adjacent street, but I just happened to drive by it at this time of day. There were two cars parked on each side. You can see that that creates one lane of travel through the middle. So that's why we are suggesting the widening of the road. So staff is recommending approval of the first replat of block three Monterey addition, subject to five conditions of approval and denial of the variance from Chapter 103A2 of the Land Subdivision Ordinance. The five conditions of approval are: we need a copy of the tax certification that there are no delinquent taxes; install the sidewalks on West Avenue Y; prepare and submit plans for required improvements to West Avenue Y; submit a financial guarantee or get a variance; install the water and sewer service lines for these new lots; and install the water line or submit a financial guarantee for the new lot that will be directly north of the overhead pedestrian bridge that goes over North Bryant. Does anyone have any questions?
So anyone have questions for the city staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name.
Good morning, Russell with SKG. Want to go kind of go over a couple of the items. The last item, number five, or letter five, number five, about the water main, we just kind of had some email correspondence with engineering. There is an existing four-inch water main that the city's recently run out there. So what is proposed to go there is a churches chicken. It's a very small, primarily drive-through type, especially in today's environment store. And so from what I'm being told by the architect, the building doesn't have to be sprinkled, and so there's not a huge demand that we believe that the four-inch line would be adequate. There is a fire hydrant within hose lay to the building, so we do not believe we need a fire hydrant any closer. And so we would ask maybe to loosen that verbiage up on item five to kind of be as determined, you know, based on kind of conversation with the engineering and fire department. So if we could loosen that and give us some flexibility, if it's not necessary, then we don't have to do it. And then on the variance request on the street width, the developer is following the sidewalk, and he's happy to do that. If you look back or recall the pictures that Hillary Fadell showed on that, on this side or our side of Avenue Y, there's kind of the intersection of Bryant and Y, there's a curb ramp in place there. There's a utility pole, and then there's the guy wire, and then you go a little further, there's another utility pole right at the back of curb. So and this is a very short little street. And so we have a series of the alphabet letters effectively going through. They're connecting Bryant and Ben Picklin. And so there's not a a lot of traffic, if you will, that is really, other than people going to the school or to the Y in the park area, we believe this is kind of a more of off the main path that would necessitate to widen the street for the additional four feet. We are dedicating the additional 10 feet of right-of-way that compresses our site a little bit, but we believe, talking to the architect, that the site will still be there. So if in the future for some reason things change and it does need to be widened, it could be, but we would just ask. And that's the challenge with these small little infill projects. They're the, and I know they can be based on cost, if you will, but they really struggle to make these things work. And I guess until recent times when planning revised subdivision ordinance, because these are already plated lots. Then about a year and a half ago, we wouldn't have to be going through the replat process, but because the ordinance was changed, the required platted areas potentially be replatted whenever you're the commercial, when you're doing a numerous lot. So here we are. So anyway, we would just ask for the granting of the variance on this street width improvement and be happy to answer any questions.
The, is there a curb cut on Bryant?
There is. There's an alleyway, and Hillary showed it's kind of divided. We have two lots, and there's an alleyway that comes onto Bryant. And I don't know how well you can see
Yes, sir.
here. But there is an alley, an existing alleyway, and so the architect is proposing a curb cut. And so we've got a parking lot here. This is right by, it would kind of be under the shadow of the overpass, the pedestrian overpass. And then the building here and mostly the drive-through and parking lot is going to be on the side of the alley. So most traffic is going to be kept primarily coming off of Bryant.
Okay. Is there a way to get across Bryant if you're headed south into that curb cut? Or would you, seems like there's a curb cut on Y.
There is. There is a curb cut on Y, and they do have an entrance exit off of Y. So they, you know, if you're going south, you're going to go onto the residential street to cut across South Bryant.
Okay. Or go past it and turn, U-turn back up to the site?
Right.
Okay. All right. Anyone have questions for Mr. Gully? Thank you, Russell. Anyone else have public comment on this case?
Mitchell Gatlin with engineering. I just did also want to point out that the service line condition, we are supporting and granting that deferral on the service lines.
Okay. Does that include the water main line sizing that Russell alluded to?
With the water main, we would just like it to be worded more depending on fire protection requirements.
Okay. So you guys would be agreeable to a reduced water main line size on this site, provided that the fire marshals allowed it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it would depend on the fire protection requirements to upsize that line.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come forward.
No, I had a question for Mitchell. Is the fire protection requirements that's based on the square footage of the building?
It would depend on if the building needs to have a fire suppression system or if it needs a hydrant installed in proximity.
Okay. And I believe Ross Coleman is on the line, so if we have any specific items, he may be able to better answer those.
This is about the building that Russell was just talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
No, I mean, like he said, it's not it's not required. Usually, the sprinkler system is required based on a number of people that occupy the building and then the occupancy type. So in this instance, it sounds like it's what we would call an A2. So the occupant load has to get up to 100 before we would have those requirements. So as far as that goes, we're good. And as far as I could tell, we're within the 400-foot metric for the hydrant hose lay. So I think we're good on those issues.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
But again, I think we want to leave the condition in there based on the fire marshal's requirements. In the odd case, the building moves through site development or something to that instance, we want to have that in there, making sure they understand that if something drastically changes, we have the ability to require the upsizing.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment. Now, I guess a discussion amongst us. This this case, to me, looks a lot like the Chick-fil-A case on Knickerbocker that we that we heard. I guess it's been a couple of years ago now. And there was a variance request of very similar nature for Jackson Street. There was a requirement from the city to widen it approaching that intersection along the property's frontage. And if any of you guys have been to Chick-fil-A and seen the traffic that goes around that site, the minimal widening of that lane on Jackson Street is significant because it allows for turning lane access for traffic that's going northbound. And so I think based on what Hillary's outlined with the narrow streets on the north side and the access that folks are going to need from Avenue Y to get into this site, it makes sense to me to want to widen that road to allow for better egress. That's my take on this site. So anyone else have thoughts or wish to make a motion?
So I went over there Friday afternoon and drove around. The vehicles that are parked that were in the picture with Hillary taking those, those are people that are in the construction that are currently building those homes on both sides. They're still finishing the white one, and they were still working on the other one. The 26 feet, it is a narrow street. It's already curbed and guttered. This business is going to be on the corner with the access from Bryant. I think it would work the way it is. There's a lot of different area over there. What I'm thinking about, if you widen that right there at the corner of Avenue Y, people are going to assume that it's wide all the way down, those that aren't familiar with the area. And it could cause safety issues that way. So to me, widen it for a one-block street is not necessary. When you do Chick-fil-A, you're doing that, you've got, you're going into Knickerbocker Road, which is a three-lane street, and Chick-fil-A has figured out how to incorporate their customers and make it really fast around there. But I think you're comparing two different two different apples and oranges instead of the same.
It looks to me like there's a lot more frontage along the major thoroughfare for this site than there would be on Knickerbocker. So
Yes.
That access in that alleyway, that looks like it would be the primary access point to the site.
Except that there's not a curb cut across the main lane median of Bryant. So if you're driving south and you want to go to churches, you're going to turn on Avenue Y and enter the site from the north, I believe. It's, I understand the point you guys are making. I'm I'm just speaking from experience. I've been down those roads to get to the rec center as well. And if there's cars on either side of the street, it's pretty tight. But certainly not the end of the world if it goes, if we grant the variance. So does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the variance and the plat. And also, number five, having that change, the verbiage change on there deferred as per fire protection requirement.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this presented with a change to note five making it subject to fire department requirement only. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye by show of hands. Opposed?
Seven zero.
Seven zero. All right. Next case, Denny addition, section two, request for approval of a replat of Denny addition, section two, being 2.588 acres located west of the intersection of Irene Street and Roosevelt Street, and a variance from Chapter 103A2 of the Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance to maintain a paving width of 36 feet without curb and gutter in lieu of the required 36 feet with a four-foot sidewalk or 40 feet with curb and gutter for Irene Street, an urban local street, and a variance from 103A2 of the Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance for a proposed paving width of 32 feet in lieu of the required 36 feet with a four-foot sidewalk or 40 feet with a curb and gutter for Denny Way, an urban local street.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners, Commissioners, if you'll bear with me for just a moment. As you indicated, this is a request for a replat for Denny addition, section two. Not very long ago, you did approve section one, which was this piece of property and this piece of property. And now we are adding in section two, this piece of property also. Here is Roosevelt, just to orient you and to give you a better feel for the area. The zoning in this area is RM1 with a small, RS1 with a small area of RM2, and I'll show you that in just a minute. The vision has it says neighborhood. It is in District Three, Mr. Thomas's district. And it is in the Fort Concho East neighborhood. This is the proposed plat. You can see this is Denny Way, which will be a new street. There are 10 residential lots that are intended. And this one lot, which is in replat, will have frontage off of Irene, and that is part of the request for a variance on Irene. It is 2.588 acres. We did notify, because this is a residential replat, we had a number of people who called and visited about what was intended for this site. We sent out 19 notices, but we did not receive back any in support or in opposition. This area is in conformity with a comprehensive plan. As I indicated, it is designated neighborhood, and that's the intended use is for single-family residential. And also is in conformity with the intent of purpose statements in that the plat will provide for the orderly, safe development of the city, and it provides for systematic and accurate record of development. There is two variances essentially being requested. One is for Irene Street, which is to maintain the existing street that does, and street paving width, and there is a lack of curbing gutter on Irene. And staff is in agreement with that variance. The second request for a variance is on Denny Street. They are requesting 32 feet width on the pavement, and then there will be curbing gutter. And of course, we are going, we are requiring sidewalks because we are narrowing the street. Staff is also in favor of that because this is a very short street. It serves those 10 lots. And it makes sense to have the smaller width and to have sidewalk to move the traffic to Roosevelt. We believe this is not detrimental to the area. It's a contained site. It is in keeping with the existing development that is along Irene Street. And so we believe that it is not detrimental. We also believe that it's kind of a unique area. This is an older area of town. The development has been there for a very long time. To add curbing gutter on to Irene and to widen it for just that 55 feet makes no sense at all. And we agree that Denny Way at 32 feet does make sense and are just requesting that it be curbing gutter and sidewalk, which our subdivision ordinance absolutely agrees with. Not granting the variance particularly for Irene would be a hardship for those in the neighborhood. It would be a safety factor also. And we believe granting the variance will not in any way affect the subdivision ordinance and the intent. So again, staff is recommending the approval of the replat of Denny addition, section two, with the approval of two variances for paving width and no curbing gutter on Irene and paving width on Danny with curbing gutter and sidewalks. And we recommend eight conditions of approval. Number one is the tax certification. Number two is to prepare and submit plans for sidewalks for both sides of Denny Way. Number three is to submit a drainage study. Number four is to prepare and submit plans for approval illustrating the required construction of Denny Way. Five is to prepare and submit plans for approval illustrating the required construction of Irene or to grant a variance. Number six is install the necessary sewer main, water main, and service connections to the lots. And number seven is install necessary water and wastewater lines. And number eight is the fact that fire hydrants are required within 600 feet. And if you go to lot 1A, that lot is in fact further away than the 600 feet. And so the fire department, Fire Marshal's Office has recommended a fire hydrant for that area. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Sheri. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering. First, I want to thank really staff, both planning and engineering, for working with us to do this. This is this is maybe rendition six of this. This is kind of a unique area, as Sheri alluded to. First, we kind of had some black lock. We were trying to work in there. Engineering fixed the idea of kind of this hammerhead street, and staff had worked with this and supported variance to go narrower. And so we think we've come to really a great option and solution for this area. So it's a great infill project. Hopefully, things work out. It's going to kind of spurgenstini and her father are working real hard to kind of acquire a lot of the land in this area and prove this. It's going to kind of spurgenstini and her father are working real hard to kind of acquire a lot of the land in this area and prove this and meet a housing need. So really, we'd just be happy to answer questions and would like a clarification on, on the sidewalks to make sure that like we do on most all sidewalks for residential, that the condition of the sidewalk would be deferred to CO of each lot or home that they're built on each one, so that they're not destroyed as part of the house home construction process. So we'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Gully? Thank you, Russell. Uh, anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comments and open it up for a discussion amongst the planning commission members or a motion. Anyone have any thoughts they'd like to share?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor say aye by show of hands. Opposed?
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero. All right. First replat of lots 4A and 5A, industrial developers addition tract five. Request for approval of the first replat of lots 4A, 5A industrial developers addition tract five being 3.329 acres located at the intersection of executive drive, sunset drive and Hamilton Way. And a variance from chapter nine at 3A1 of the land development subdivision ordinance to provide two lots that do not have direct and abutting access to a dedicated and improved public street.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe this is another one that Russell Gully would like to speak on first before staff starts their presentation.
Sure. Mr. Gully?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Hillary. Um, this area is it's very complex in ownership and leases and how and why we're doing this task is kind of tied to, I guess, the convention sale, if you will, of Shannon, of Shannon acquiring part of the community hospital in real estate. And so what we'd like to do is postpone this for 30 days. Give everybody on the buyer and seller and less or less east side to step back and and see if we can find a way to, to come up with something that staff can support and how we present this. And this is a kind of a very unique situation and a unique ask on why we're doing it this way. So, so we'd like some time. If you guys could postpone until the next meeting and give us time to come up with a solution that could be more powerful to do that.
Okay.
So this is another one where they're requesting the 30 day waiver, and we would table this item until the next meeting if the board chooses to accept it.
All right. So we have a request from the applicant to table this case until October's planning commission meeting. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor say aye by show of hands, please. Opposed?
I'm sorry, Joe, was that in favor? Joe Spano? Yes. Okay. So seven, zero.
Seven, zero. All right. Replat of lots 27, or excuse me, 29 through 37, block 38, Forest Park Edition, request for approval of a replat of lots 29 to 37, block 38, Forest Park Edition being 0.72 acres. Located south of Forest Park Avenue between Hatcher Street and Childress Street. And a variance from chapter 10, 3, A2 of the land development subdivision ordinance to maintain a paving width of 30 feet with curb and gutter in lieu of the required 36 feet with a four foot sidewalk or 40 feet with curb and gutter for Forest Park Avenue and urban local street.
Good morning, planning commissioners. This is Jeff Fisher, principal planner. This is a replat of lots 29 to 37, block 38, Forest Park Edition. It's a replat of nine substandard lots into four new complying lots, and it'll allow three new single family homes to be built. The zoning is RS1 and the future land use is neighborhood. It's in district two, Tom Thompson, in the Angelo Heights neighborhood. So these were plotted back in 1931, this original Forest Park Edition. There were only 20 foot, 25 foot wide lots. And of course, they didn't meet zoning, but there was no zoning in 1931. So our, our policy is to allow a house to be built to cross over lot lines. And so that, that would normally work, except this home over here on 33A originally encroached over the lot line and didn't have the setback. So there was an issue there. So what this will do is it'll basically clean this up. Uh, it'll replat into basically four new lots. So 29A, 31A, 37A. Eliminate the encroachment, allow the five foot setback. So this home will now be complying. And then allow three new single family homes. They've also requested a variance to request Forest Park Avenue, which is 30 feet wide. It needs to be 40 or 36 with a four foot sidewalk to stay at 30 feet with the curb and gutter. This was also a residential replat, so we mailed out notifications within the same subdivision in 200 feet. 23 notices were mailed and we did not receive any responses. Staff believes that the Forest Park Edition replat will conform with the comprehensive plan. The replat will allow three new homes to be built, eliminate the encroachment of an existing home, and that's consistent with the neighborhood policies to promote more neighborhood diversity and security by encouraging a mix of age, income and housing choices. So this will allow some more single family homes in this infill area. Conforms with the intent of purpose statements as well. The existing street width are, already has 30 feet. Staff did some research on this, and there were four variances already granted within a one block radius on either side of this development, keeping it at 30 feet. So we just believe this will allow this to continue. It's a low density, single family residential home. The 30 feet is already there. The curb and gutter is already there. So we believe this one should be approved for the variance. These are looking at some of the photographs. You can see curb and gutter asphalt on both sides. So supporting the variance, staff is in support. The two new homes are already allowed, allowing the crossing over lot lines. It's just to fix the encroachment. That also makes that situation unique. Uh, and there would be a hardship. They would have to remove all the curb and gutter, tear it up, only to rebuild it again. So this just makes sense. Uh, it will not vary any applicable, other applicable ordinances. Two of the lots to the west got administrative adjustments for 47 feet. As I was mentioning about the encroachment, so that made that one lot six feet wider. So therefore those other two lots were three feet a bit less. But again, at 47 feet, they can put a, a pretty wide home. So they got that variance and all of the lots will comply. Staff recommends approval of a replat of lots 29 to 37, block 38, Forest Park Edition, and approval of a variance to maintain 30 feet of paving with, with curb and gutter, subject to five conditions of approval. Provide a tax certificate, correct the scale to reflect the mentions on the plat drawing. One of the scales is, is correct, but the, I guess the photo image is not whatever that is, one per 50. So they can revise that and then provide a clean copy that doesn't have the structures on it. Again, administrative things that can be done quickly. Prepare and submit plans for required improvements to Forest Park Avenue financial guarantee or variance. Staff supporting a variance, so that condition will be fulfilled if you all approve the variance. And finally, install water and wastewater service lines to the lot. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and that concludes staff's presentation. Any questions or comments?
Anyone have questions for Jeff or the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you would, please state your name. Good morning.
This is Erica Carter with Carter's Interest Engineering, and I'm just asking for the commissioners to approve as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Erica. Anyone have questions for Ms. Carter? All right. Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comments. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor say aye by show of hands. Opposed?
Passes seven, zero.
All right. The Palms, section three, request for approval of final plat of the Palm, section three being 5.591 acres. Located north and west of Hillside Drive, approximately one mile west of the intersection of Hillside Drive and Nickerbacher Road, and a variance from chapter nine, 3A1 of the land development subdivision ordinance to exempt the requirement for lots to have direct abutting access to a public street right of way.
All right, planning commissioners, Jeff Fisher, again, this is our next case, the Palm, section three. So this is a final plat for 10 new single family lots with a 26 foot private road access easement. So they have no direct abutting access to the city street. And they are requesting a variance to allow that situation. So there will be a 26 foot private road access built, but it does not have direct and abutting access to Hillside Drive at this time. The zoning is RS1 and the future land use is a neighborhood and transitional. It's in district one, Tommy Hebert, in the Nazworthy neighborhood. So there was a preliminary plat approved back in October 2013. It approved all of the lots in the purple, as well as this potential access drive in here, which was just labeled as track A. A developer agreement was negotiated with the developer and the city. And that developer agreement basically said, well, city will sell you this land in exchange for building this subdivision. So the original plat also included these lots. So they're going to split this up and just work on this section right now. So the, the purple are the six existing lots. They're going to be a little bit longer so that they close this gap here between the future access road. But generally, we, staff believes that they conform with the preliminary plat. They're also adding two new lots over here in, in blue, and then another two here that are outside the preliminary plat. But again, that point is moved for the subdivision ordinance because basically they're covering all of the land that they have left. So they can do a final plat on anything that they have left. They're not going to be leaving a remainder. And then what you see in here conforms. Uh, so this is the infrastructure plan provided by the applicant. So there's water and sewer that will extend along here. Here's a future access easement. This is a very steep grade differential. I'll get into that a minute with the variance. So there'll be, basically this area here is owned by the city, so they, they can't get those lots to touch Hillside Drive and also with the grade differential. So there'll be a, the access easement in here and then coming down onto this side. And so here are the 10 lots. The variance is, is to exempt the direct and abutting access as mentioned. We believe that it conforms with the preliminary plat for the reasons mentioned. The lots are a little bit longer, but they generally conform and they eliminate the gap between the lots and the future access road. The conformity with the comprehensive plan, the westerly lots are designated neighborhood in the future land use plan. That's consistent with the neighborhood policies. Again, promote neighborhood diversity and security by more housing choices. The transitional part also conforms. You've got ranch and estate zoning, the jogging trail to the south. So this is RS1, but that'll provide some transition from the EP, more commercial lands as you get closer to Nickerbacher to the east, and then the ranch and estate to the south. The final plaque conforms to the preliminary plat we just mentioned. The infrastructure plan confirms that water and sewer installations will be provided. And the private access road through the easement will service the new lots per the original developer agreement and in, in the preliminary plat approval. So it, it conforms. This is looking west on Hillside Drive and east on Hillside Drive. This is where that roughly where that new access road will be built, and then the lots will be further down this hill. So you can see that it's probably easier if you're actually driving or walking down there. You can really see that, that steep grade differential. So we are supporting the variance. We believe that the access easement for the private road was already granted through that developer agreement by the city in 2014 and 15. The 26 foot wide road does meet the minimum standard for fire in the land division and development subdivision ordinance. The access easements have been approved in other Lake Nazworthy plots already. That doesn't mean we would always support it or that we would have supported it here. But the fact there was a city council decision already allowing the 26 foot wide road, in this case, we believe that that would meet the intent and, and in conjunction with the city council policy. Finally, we believe there'd be a hardship, talked about the slope differential. And finally, each lot will comply with the RS1 zoning provisions. It's not going to vary the ordinance. In fact, the lots are about four times larger than what the minimum is. So they're going to be nice, large lots backing out close to Lake Nazworthy. Staff recommends approval of a final plat of the Palm, section three, and approval of a variance to exempt the requirement for lots to have direct and abutting access to a public street right of way, subject to six conditions of approval. Provide the tax cert, submit plans and install sewer main and connections. Submit evaluation lift stations affected by the development. Submit plans and install water main and connections. Submit a drainage study. And finally, execute and report an amended developer agreement. This will just be updating the original developer agreement based on the new lot. So I will stop sharing my screen, and that concludes staff's presentation. Any questions or comments?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Yes.
Jeff, I have a question for you. So 26 foot wide street, and that would be built to city standards, would that also have curb and gutter or not where the houses are?
That's, that's a good question. I, I believe it would be the curb and gutter, but I, I may, I probably will defer that to engineering and see if they had any comments. All I do know is that the original agreement, which was about seven years ago, had, had talked about an access road. I don't remember if the legal document said it had to be curb and gutter or not.
Mitchell Gatlin with engineering. To my knowledge, usually on private drives, we do not require those to be constructed to city standard. So it would be up to the developer to determine pavement surface and curbing gutter installation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mitchell.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Sheri, we'll, we'll be looking at something there because it is private and it'll have to be maintained by the homes in that area. We'll want to do something, you know, if we can, we want to just do it out of concrete. And then we'll look at drainage and see what's necessary to deal with drainage. So we'll be working and with engineering and looking at drainage and doing something that's really low maintenance and long, long lasting.
I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment, by the way. So, Mr. Gully, go ahead. If you have anything else you'd like to add on this case.
No, just thanks staff and legal for working with us on, on this. This is a really a unique situation, but I, I think it can be a great addition to kind of opening up some additional lots at the lake creating tax base, additional tax base for the city. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Gully? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? If you would, please come forward, state your name. All right, I'm going to close public comments. And if anyone wishes to make a motion or share their thoughts on this case, please do so.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the city staff. All in favor say aye by show of hands. Opposed?
Passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
All right. Related comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. City council has final authority for approval of comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings. A 913 West 33rd Street, San Angelo WF LLC. CP 20 dash 05, 913 West 33rd Street, request for approval of an amendment to the city of San Angelo. Comprehensive plan changing certain lands from the neighborhood, neighborhood center, future land uses to the commercial future land use, being 12 acres located at 913 West 33rd Street. And then Z 20 dash 11, 913 West 33rd Street. Request for approval of a rezoning from a single family residential zoning district to the general commercial zoning district being 10 acres. being ten acres located at nine thirteen West Thirty-third Street.
Good morning, Shelley Pascal Planner.
Shelley, may I interrupt you? I need to recuse myself from this, so I'm going to turn mine off right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the zone change is highlighted in red here, and then the comp plan is the twelve acres in blue, and the rezoning's the ten acres in red. And the rezoning is from single-family residential to general commercial. The comp plan is from neighborhood center, in neighborhood to commercial. It is located within District Two, Tom Thompson, and their neighborhood is Riverside. This is the zoning and future land use maps for these twelve acres. As you can see, this ten acres here is zoned RS1. And on the future land use map, it is both neighborhood center and neighborhood. There's a couple of photos of the subject property. And the photo on the left, as you can see on the far left, this is Bryant here. And this is looking from the parking lot behind the county offices. And that's the rear of the subject property. As you can see, it is currently vacant. This is commercial south of the subject property and commercial across Bryant from the subject property. And here's a few of the residents within the area of the subject property, one being an apartment complex, and the other, which is residential, which is north, is single-family residential. I did send out twenty-seven notifications. I did not receive any in favor nor opposition. The existing zoning on the ten acres would not allow the proposed use as a wholesale trade. To allow the proposed use as a wholesale trade, first, the rezoning would have to be approved, and then also, they would have to come back for a conditional use approval on this property. There is strips of existing CG on the front two acres that abuts the North Bryant Boulevard. The proposed comp plan amendment to commercial would be consistent with the surrounding development pattern in the area, and also, the subject property would be a better fit for commercial due to the property being partially surrounded by commercial uses and the fact that it directly abuts North Bryant Boulevard. Is it consistent with the zoning ordinance? It is currently vacant, and the proposed zone change will allow a wide variety of commercial uses on the subject property. And any new development must comply with the zoning ordinance regulations. We look to see if it was compatible with the surrounding area. It is located in an area that has mixed commercial to the south and residential uses to the north. There is a single-family residential neighborhood directly northeast of the subject property, and also apartment complex directly north. Existing commercial development patterns along North Bryant. The single-family homes, the RS1 has never been developed on this property and has remained vacant. And the rezoning would make better use of this property. The comp plan amendment and the rezoning are anticipated to have little adverse effect on the natural environment other than naturally during any construction of any proposed commercial use. We do believe that allowing the site to rezone to commercial would reflect the continuing need for commercial in this area. The existing development pattern in the immediate area along North Bryant Boulevard is considered commercial and higher intensity residential. These parcels will be in keeping with adjoining lots directly adjacent and along this corridor. City staff, we do recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, changing the future land use designation from the neighborhood center and neighborhood to the future land use of commercial, and approval of the rezoning from the single-family residential zoning district to the general commercial residential district. Any questions?
Anyone have questions for Shelley? Or the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please state your name and your single member district.
I believe the applicant is on as well. So, Mr. Clark, if you have anything you would like to add, this would be the time.
Yeah, I didn't want to come in as a public comment. I mean, I guess I am. You know, so thrilled to be in San Angelo. This is kind of something happened on this that's not very common. So Tractor's got us working on four or five projects right now, and they didn't say drop everything, but they said, don't worry about other stuff until y'all get to San Angelo and kind of start working and get that worked out. So that's kind of a rare, I don't know, it was, I've never had a drop everything call with those guys. So they're pretty excited about this store. And then obviously, our team is too. I mean, we'll go anywhere, but I like being on the highway the size of Bryant. That's going to be kind of special for what we normally get to do. All right, no other comments. It looks like, you know, we fit in, and, you know, I hope you guys are excited also.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do you want to have questions for the applicant? All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. State your name. All right, we're going to close public comments. Anyone have thoughts they'd like to share or wish to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the city staff. All in favor, say aye. Or show of hands, excuse me. And opposed?
So that actually passes five zero. Ryan Smith actually stepped away as well, so.
Okay.
At a conflict, I think he just had to step away for a minute, so it's five zero.
All right, five zero on both cases, or one case.
Both cases, yes, sir.
Related comprehensive plan amendment and conditional use. City Council has final authority for approval of comprehensive plan amendments. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Bell Street, Paint Rock Road, Kilcon Properties LLC. CP twenty dash oh six, Bell Street and Paint Rock Road, request for approval of an amendment to the city of San Angelo Comprehensive Plan, changing certain lands from neighborhood future land use to the neighborhood center future land use, being point five five three acres located at the northwest corner of South Bell Street and Paint Rock Road.
All right.
And then, I'm sorry, I've got one more here.
Okay, yeah.
CU twenty dash twelve, Bell Street and Paint Rock Road, a request for approval of the conditional use to allow for retail sales and service in the office commercial zoning district, being point five five three acres located at the northwest corner of South Bell Street and Paint Rock Road.
Okay, again, Hillary Bueker, planning manager. We are going to go through this property. It's kind of an unusual piece of property. The comp plan currently is designated as neighborhood. We are looking to take the comp plan to neighborhood center and to allow a conditional use for retail sales and service. The zoning on this property was already office commercial, so that would have allowed a conditional use to allow these services. Again, we're looking at about half an acre. It's on the northwest corner of South Bell and Paint Rock Road, directly across from the Stripes and the corner of Goodfellow Air Force Base. We are in SMD three, Harry Thomas's district in the Bel Air neighborhood. So this is just a quick map of the future land use and current zoning. So the current future land use shows this area's neighborhood, but the current zoning is already office commercial. So again, we're changing a little bit of both of those. Give you some pictures and some ideas of the surroundings for both of these cases. So the first picture on your left is looking basically from the Stripes across the street to the subject property. It's a pretty large little corner there, pretty busy intersection. And the next picture on the right is from the subject property looking east toward the Stripes, and then again, kind of toward Goodfellow Air Force Base. There are residential properties directly north of this and commercial across South Bell Street. So the future land use of neighborhood center would allow this commercial use. Neighborhood center does seek to create more pedestrian-friendly character, and they're more integrated with their surroundings. We're looking at two different ways to do this. You'll see in the conditions of approval. The neighborhood center would create a transition from the commercial already east of Bell Street to the residential that's existing on the north and west side. We're looking at sidewalks and screening as well to help that transition. The current neighborhood designation was never utilized, and so we believe this is because of that major intersection. So again, we're looking to minimize impacts with sidewalks and the screening. The proposed development is consistent with the office commercial. We will just allow the use of retail sales and service. The area does have mixed uses, again, as I said, residential to the north and west, commercial to the east and southeast. We see no permanent effects on the national environment. Sorry about that misspelling. We have current and proposed use reflective of the continuing need for commercial in this area, and the proposed development will fit in along the commercial strip that is South Bell with sidewalks and screening to help it blend into the neighborhood. We did mail out twenty-three notifications. We have not received any in favor or in opposition. For this reason, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment from neighborhood to neighborhood center and approval of the conditional use to allow retail sales and service in the office commercial zoning district, subject to three conditions. And again, these conditions, we're really looking at how can we blend this development into the neighborhood. So the applicant will have to obtain building permits as required. We are asking them to submit a landscape plan to the planning division for review and approval. The plan will be required to have landscaping to resemble the character of adjacent neighborhoods and provide visual screening of headlights in the neighboring homes. Again, we don't, you know, we don't want it to be this extravagant landscape, but a couple of things will help this building blend in a little bit more. The applicant shall prepare and submit plans for the approval of the sidewalk along LaSalle Drive. I believe text dot, it's a brand-new sidewalk, but there is currently a sidewalk installed on Paint Rock Road, and this property actually does not have a lot of frontage along Bell Street, so they will have sidewalks along their frontage. So the LaSalle Drive one will add to that and allow the neighborhood residents to be able to hop on the sidewalk and come to the business. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Any questions for Hillary or the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you would, please state your name and your single member district or address.
This is Russell with SKG. We're working with Larry and Kilcon on this. I have a question. How do you have a landscape plan resemble the character of adjacent neighborhood? I've driven that street for years, and there's just not a whole lot of landscape at best out there. And I know it's probably inch around finding something to screen headlights from the house across the street. So, and then even the sidewalk, are these, I guess, conditions two and three something that we can address in the building permitting stage, and the sidewalk would be completed as part of construction?
Correct.
And that makes it all tie together?
Yes, sir. Both the landscape plan and the sidewalk plan could be deferred until the building permit phase. The landscape plan, I think, by adding some shrubs and some trees, again, that area is not heavily landscaped, but I think adding a couple of, you know, neighborhood-like areas where this pocket landscaping could help it blend into the neighborhood. And then again, the screening of the headlights, one of the major concerns was having a drive-through where a car is packing space, and they're stacked up, and they're shining into the adjacent residential, because there is a home directly across LaSalle.
Correct, and I think, Hillary, you and I can work through this, but even maybe a low three-foot fence, you know, could be helpful, because in elevation, that lot is higher than the adjacent residence out there. So maybe we can just work through something with landscaping, with something to satisfy.
And I think we could do a combination possibly, so if that's something the applicant is willing to look at. Again, I think the screening, the landscaping, the sidewalks are all things that are going to help us blend it in with the adjacent residential.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Russell, you got any other questions? All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name. All right, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for a discussion or a motion. Excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan amendment and the conditional use as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye by show of hands. Opposed?
Motion passes seven zero.
Seven zero. All right, rezonings. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings. PD twenty dash oh two, Green Meadow Drive, request for approval of rezoning from a planned development zoning district, which allowed for retail sales and service uses and offices with type-one outdoor storage to a planned development zoning district to allow for a multi-family housing development, being one point four-two-five acres located at thirty-eight twenty-four Green Meadow Drive. Are we taking these cases together or separately?
It should be separate, two separate cases.
Okay. So PD twenty dash oh two.
Thank you, Chair, Stripling Planning Commissioners. Jeff Fisher again, principal planner. Our next case is PD twenty oh two. The address is thirty-eight twenty-four Green Meadow Drive. Some of you that were commissioners since last year, which is probably all of you except for Brittany today, are familiar with this property. It was RM one zoning, formerly R three, from nineteen eighty-three all the way till two thousand nineteen. Brittany today, are familiar with this property. It was... Sorry about that, there might be an echo. Anyway, it existed since two thousand nineteen, and it was changed in two thousand nineteen for an office, retail office units with some warehousing and storage in the back. And that development did not go through, so the new developer wants to develop it as a multi-family development of duplexes. So there would be a total of twenty-eight units in fourteen buildings. Of those fourteen buildings, six of them would be one-bedroom units, a total of twelve. And then the other buildings, eight buildings, would be for two-bedroom, sixteen units. So a total of twenty-eight residential units in this area. It's in District Six, Billy DeWitt, in the Bonham neighborhood. The future land use is commercial, and the zoning currently is PD nineteen oh six, and that was for the retail development that didn't take place. So this is looking west on Green Meadow, and as you go to this area, it's predominantly residential the further west that you go. So you have a seniors' complex and that red building down there, and on this side, you've got a mix of townhouses and apartments. As you go further east towards southwest in this direction, it starts to become more commercial in nature. So this is looking north at the subject property, and this is south at the existing homes. Twenty-five notices were mailed out. Staff did not receive any in favor or in opposition. So staff is supporting the request. We believe it's compatible with the comprehensive plan policies. This serves as a transitional use in the commercial designation between commercial uses to the east and residential uses to the south and west. It's consistent with the zoning ordinance. All of the PD buildings will comply with the underlying RM one zoning provisions. So the applicant could have gone to straight RM one zoning and just went back to where it was before two thousand nineteen, but they wanted to have a little bit more room to allow some more density. And so the PD will incorporate a couple standards that the straight RM one zoning would not allow, one of those being a zero-foot side and rear yard setback to get a little closer, because to the north is city land, and that's FEMA floodway, so it really can't be developed anyway. So staff's supporting that reduction in the setback. The second thing is, in the parking section of the zoning ordinance, a duplex would require two parking spaces per unit. The applicant has provided plenty of parking anyway, but we wanted to go down to the multi-family standard, because it really serves as a multi- but we wanted to go down to the multifamily standard because it really serves as a multifamily development. So it'd be the one bedroom units would have one and a half parking spaces and then the two or more bedroom units would have one point seven five. That, that would just allow some flexibility. The applicant changes his mind, wants to revise his plan, provide some more green space. He could do that. He wouldn't be held to that parking standard. But again, he meets both regardless. It's compatible with the surrounding area. You've got a transition with the multifamily between the townhomes and apartments to the south and west and then the commercial to the east. As mentioned, the change conditions, this has sat vacant for many, many years. The approval to commercial in two thousand nineteen didn't happen, so we believe that it's appropriate to go back to a multifamily development at this time. There shouldn't be any effects on the natural environment. However, a drainage study will be required because the site's more than an acre and between now and, and time of permitting, we'll look at grading and drainage and stormwater and so engineering will be able to address that. And if there are any issues, they could always make some minor tweaks to their concept plan. This is a section I really wanted to hone in on, on community need. The twenty-eight multifamily units, there, there was a Res Intel study. Some of you may be familiar with, myself and some of the other planners have referenced this before in our development reviews. But what's key here is that two, three, and four unit multifamily housing only makes up four percent of the housing stock and that housing stock is, is over ninety-five percent occupancy. What's also key, and I, I wrote it down in front of me, it's not on the screen, but rents have increased by twenty-five percent over the last two years. So why does this matter? Because multifamily kind of gets wedged between the apartments, the high-end apartments, which can be like the boulevard, which are often very expensive or a single family. So there's really nothing in the middle and we believe that the applicant will be serving those, those needs. As mentioned, there's only one thousand one hundred eleven multifamily units built in the last ten years. And so even at twenty-eight units, we believe this will help situation. No major issues in terms of development patterns. Access will be provided off of Green Meadow. So this is the concept plan provided. We believe it meets the general design guidelines, planning principles. You've got the, the houses, or excuse me, the duplex units sort of in the front. Most of the parking will be in the back. They'll, if needed, they'll be able to adjust the spiral lane. And you can see the smaller units, buildings are the one-bedroom and then the larger ones are the, are the two-bedroom. So again, total of twenty-eight units. Staff recommends approval of a rezoning to a planned development PD twenty oh-two zoning district to allow multifamily housing development located at thirty-eight twenty-four Green Meadow Drive, subject to the five conditions of approval. So one is, as mentioned, the RM one standards will apply except for the setbacks will allow zero feet to the side and the rear. One and a half parking spaces for one-bedroom and one point seven five for two-bedroom. The overall site use will be in accordance with the concept plan that you saw. An urban design review will be required. So that'll allow us to look at landscaping and design and of the, what types of materials and colors and things like that at a later time. And finally, exterior lighting, if they do provide any, should be shielded downward. That's again a standard comment. We're very close to other residential, so we'll, we'll work with the applicant on that. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Any questions or comments?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please state your name.
The applicant is here. If any of the commissioners do have questions for them as well.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment and open it up for a discussion or a motion amongst us.
Make your motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye by show of hands. Opposed?
Motion six zero. It looks like Luke has stepped out for a second.
Thank you.
Six zero. All right. Z twenty dash twelve, twenty-three fourteen Carlton Way, request for approval of rezoning from single-family residence zoning district to the low-rise multifamily zoning district being point four-one-five acres located at twenty-three fourteen Carlton Way.
Well, there we go. Sherri Bailey again, doing the presentation. As you indicated, this is a request for rezoning to general commercial. Or I'm sorry, this is a rezoning from single-family to multifamily. We had gone back and forth between whether or not to recommend going to commercial or to the multifamily and decided to go to the RM one because that is the first residential district that does allow for daycare. And that is what is being proposed before you. The applicant, however, does live in this piece of property and she and her family will continue to live in the property at the same time that it is also functioning as a daycare center. The applicant does respite care, daycare for youth in foster homes. And this is a special and very needed type of daycare. She has done it for a number of years, then stopped for a short while and I'll go into that and now is wanting to do it again. The entire lot is eighteen thousand square feet, which is almost a half an acre. The future land use in the area is neighborhood. This is in District Five, Mr. Carter's district and it's in the Santa Rita neighborhood. You can see the zoning map on the left. Here is the piece of property. There is neighborhood commercial across the street. There is general commercial and heavy commercial right next to that. And you can see it on the map, but if you get out here a little further, there are a couple of other single lots that have gone to either the RM one as we are referring to or to neighborhood commercial. If the future land use, as I indicated, has it as neighborhood. And because the applicant and her family will continue to live in this piece of property, the neighborhood is appropriate. This will give you a general look of the proposed properties and the use of that property. This area here, which is off the front, which is off Carlton Way, will be the drop-off area. It is intended, it has a large area for coming in here, parking for a moment, running the kids to the front door and then coming back out. This is also the front street area on Carlton Way, which can also function as a drop-off area. This is the area just south of that parking area still on Carlton Way. If you look back here, this entire area that is behind the hedge and that's fenced in is the playground area for the daycare center. It has, does have a tall six-foot fence on, on both sides. It's very secure. This is the parking on the side street, which is between the commercial and the residence. This is the family's parking and will also be staff parking. And then if you look along this area all the way to the corner, there will, staff parking be a lot, allowed at that side also. The applicant figures she will have about five staff if she gets as large as she intends on going, which is between fifteen and twenty-five respite students at her side. This is, we sent out nineteen notices to the surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. We get, did get a number of calls that were all supportive. The one fact that I haven't shared at this point is that it is so near to ASU that a lot of the area in there is young families that are going to ASU and they're, they are familiar with this daycare center that has been there for a number of years and are supportive of it coming back. Let me give you a little background if I can on this. The applicant has had a daycare center for twenty years. She applied twenty years ago for a special use. She was granted that special use. The special use expired because not all of the commit, conditions had been met. She was not aware that it had expired. She hadn't followed through. It became a point where the state came in to review, which they normally do. And in that review, she discovered that the special use has been, had been expired and that it had reverted back to residential. So when she came in to talk to staff, we explored with her whether or not to go with a special use again or whether to rezone it to the, first we looked at general commercial and then we looked, or at neighborhood commercial. Then we looked at the RM one, which I, as I indicated before, is the residential low zoning that does allow daycare use in it by right. And as I've indicated, the applicant and their family live in the home. They will continue to live in that home and reestablish the daycare center. Because of the state rules and the fact that this is being considered now a new daycare center by the state, there are some changes that will occur to the home on the interior such as there'll be two kitchens now, one separate for the daycare center. There's a separate parking area for the staff that will be separate from the drop-off area. But as I can said before, neighborhood commercial is across the street. That's a very active neighborhood commercial and the neighborhood does get a lot of traffic. And looking at the rationale for this, the proposed zoning is still residential, which is in keeping with the use on that side of the street and the future land use or vision plan. And it becomes a good transition from that neighborhood use to the more commercial uses, which are immediately adjacent. The, it is consistent with the zoning ordinance. The home, as I indicated, is directly across the street from neighborhood commercial. The short, short walk to ASU, there are a lot of coming and going in the neighborhood and this daycare center just functions as a trend, a very good transition area. And it's definitely compatible with the surrounding area. The larger lot does kind of set off the existing residential from this commercial use of the general neighborhood. We, staff looked at this, it looked at the change conditions in the neighborhood and we believe the intended use is very compatible with the residential use in the area. And in looking at that broader site, there are a number of daycare facilities, both small and larger in the area. And the need is definitely there because it's so close to ASU. We believe that there will be no impact or very little impact on the surrounding natural environment because the daycare has essentially existed there for twenty years. The community need daycare is a top need within San Angelo and particularly close to the university. We believe that the existing development pattern that is there will not be impacted anymore. Even though it becomes a drop-off area for daycare, it really won't be impacted that much because of the, the existing commercial in the area and the coming and going of that neighborhood. And staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from single-family residential to low-rise multifamily. And with that, our presentation is complete and I'll stop sharing. Are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone have thoughts they'd like to share or wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye with show of hands. And opposed?
I have six zero in favor with Ryan Smith currently out.
Okay. Discussion items, Old Stone Ranch, Section Two, discussion on an annexation of ten point four-eight acres of the C Berberich survey, number one seventy-seven, abstract number fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment to let you know that the second half of Old Stone Ranch, second, Section Two, has submitted for annexation into the city. We will be moving forward with that. And so coming back to you will be a plat and a rezoning application. As you remember, I hope, last year and then the first part of this year, they completed annexation of this section, which is Section One. But you had approved the entire preliminary plat for this area. And so they are now coming forward with their annexation requests. And as I indicated, they'll come forward with their plat and rezoning request shortly. And I'll stop sharing at that point.
And again, these are just informational items on these next two. So if you have any questions or thoughts, we'd be glad to hear about them or your concerns. But this will, we will take the beginnings of this to council and then come back again with the pieces that Sherri spoke about, so.
Okay. Anyone have thoughts they'd like to share? All right, so there's no motion or?
It's just an informational discussion, yeah.
Okay, the next item is Bentwood CCLLC, discussion on an annexation of eighteen point seven five three acres of the C Berberich survey, number one seventy-seven, abstract number fifty-two and H Zurbach survey, number one seventy-eight, abstract number forty-two-ten.
Thanks, Commissioners. Jeff Fisher again, Principal Planner. I'll be brief as well. This is the second annexation that was submitted. This is Bentwood Country Club Estates. It's adjacent to Enclave Court. There was three pieces of this Enclave Court were part of three other previous phases of Bentwood Country Club, which were approved. Sections thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-eight. So this would be another phase of single-family residential lots in the future. And similar to Sherri's case, we'll be bringing forward a rezoning as well as, in this case, a preliminary plat for a future meeting. And this will look at this area in here to be developed. As part of that, there'll be a servicing plan as per, normally for annexations, the rezoning to RS one, that'll allow the single-family residential development. So this is the zone plan that they've provided. So you can see it's just to the east. Just a quick timeline of this, if everything goes as planned. October sixth, we'll be bringing the petition to City Council. And then November sixteenth will be the rezoning and their, their plat. And then we'll, we'll time it so that the zoning and the annexation follow the same sequence of, of time. So if all goes well, this could, the annexation could be approved by the end of the year. That concludes staff's presentation on this discussion item. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. If anyone has any comments, feel free. That concludes staff's presentation on this discussion item. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. If anyone has any comments, feel free.
Anyone have any comments they'd like to share? Okay, next item is the director's report.
Yeah, don't really have anything other than the normal, the governor has extended the virtual meeting authorization. And so we will continue with virtual meetings. I believe the direction from city council is as long as the governor authorizes virtual meetings, we'll continue those. So as he's done, he's continued it in thirty day increments. So we won't know until closer to your next meeting, whether or not the next meeting will be virtual. But we'll let you know ahead of the meeting if, once we decide to go back in person, when and if that happens.
Okay. Thank you, John. Future meeting agenda and announcements. The next regular meeting of the planning commission is tentatively scheduled to begin at nine AM on Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Adjournment. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I can't.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye with show of hands. Opposed?
Seven zero and it's ten thirty two.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.